So we're going to call the order, the Linux Public School's committee meeting, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And the first order of business is the hearing of public comment. Is there anybody who's raised their hand? You want, we never respond. School committee meeting minutes of January ninth.
Mr. Chairman, it's an emotional, except maybe so many minutes of general.
Second. We discuss. You're done. On favor. I have fun. We see that Veronica's here at some point, we need to roll all those. I mean, they not getting into the load of them. Okay.
All right, thank you. Just a few things I wanted to offer before we get into the budget as highlights, I wanted just to report to the committee that we're working on getting a student representative, and I had mentioned this previously to Bill. And I believe we'll have a rep if not by the next meeting or following. But like again, I identify these two students and use sort of a shared experience that we have students likely a senior or a freshman and one of the lower respondents, so we have some continuity moving forward. Then we'll work on building that student advisory required by statute or encouraged by statute. So hopefully we have some students coming meetings who can actually report on this, the great things happening in the school rather than me. I was happy to get an email this morning from Matt Cote, engineering teacher at the middle high school that the team traveled this past weekend and over competing robotic competition, as he pointed. We were behind and, you know, sort of not in where we needed to be and the team really came together, rallied and ended up winning the competition. So it went really tremendous. I actually have a picture in the slideshow about that and you'll Matt sent a couple of pictures along, so that was kind of cool.
And these are very sophisticated robots.
Yes, yeah, I mean, yes. Yeah, they do like these, you know, they do like mazes and go around obstacles and stuff. I don't think they do the ones that fight. Those are completely interesting. Tomorrow, I'm always excited to get into the, into the school when I have a chance, recognizing somewhat compressed three day a week schedule. But I'm going to participate with Heather McNeese, another fantastic teacher who have worked in the past in Pittsfield, who is teaching strategies for success, and I'm going to be interviewing five students for a job. And so it's part of this, this curriculum in which you begin to this sort of resume bill prepared for the kinds of things you might see as you, you know, look towards both college and career. So I'm excited to interact with at least five students tomorrow. And then I have the unenviable task of choosing one to advance into the next round. So we'll see. I reviewed their resumes, their cover letter, and they're all really, really great. So I was able last week to be in the middle high school to meet with the No Place For Hate, World of Difference team and again tremendous group of students and advisors and actually had a call a couple of days later with Phil Boglum and from the ABL around the curriculum and we're really looking to support that group and they've got, you know, a project for the bound for this year in which you're going to be working on some pledges with their peers and then also, you know, the two or three events in which they talk about. You know, some of the concepts that are in, you know, that they hope to aspire to, which is just, you know, how we sort of recognize differences and appreciate individual across the differences within a community. So happy for that. And I hope actually at some point before I go to bring that group in front of y'all to maybe a brief presentation. Also from the high school is the quiz team went to the Blender Bowl. These are all sort of new things for me. Because we didn't have that and maybe we didn't have that in Pittsfield and so they did exceptional again, Lennox team won. Apparently we built several teams because we had a B team that finished in fourth place and this E team that finished in tenth place, but overall they finished top in the quiz team and that came from Matt Gottfried and Charles Muntina, who are the advisors. So just want to send an appreciation. The advisors and all the kids, they just did a tremendous job. And I would be completely irresponsible if I lost over weather today. Today was an extremely hard call. As you know, and I just want people to understand that I don't just roll out of bed and make, make a destination. In fact, I stay up most of the night and I'm in my car driving around. My wife doesn't quite know where I am. And, and so we do our best and sort of assess the situation. I have three or four weather feeds. We have way too many texts between superintendents that everywhere and we have, we have exact knowledge on who's doing what. And we did make a decision this morning to hold school. Because A, coming in, we thought was very doable. We believed that the snow was going to be compressed during the day. And that we'd be able then to do a regular dismissal, early dismissal, actually would have been in the middle of storm. The storm was a little bigger during the day and we anticipated, and that's the honest truth. So I do just want to extend the thanks to Jeff Harvard for the entire town crew. I mean, back and forth on the phone all day. They, they hustled. I think they worked really hard to get the streets clear. I just want to send a thank out. So the thanks have to the parents and the guardians. And the kids, I think, you know, handled themselves really, really well. Jeremiah did a great job at the school doing sort of phased dismissal for the kids to go out and clear out their car and sort of get out in front of the buses. So I thought everyone reacted really in a positive way and we'll continue to do our best to sort of assess every single weather day, do our best to make the right decision and I appreciate everyone's patience. And it did respond to every email I received and they weren't all, they weren't all complimentary. None were. So anyway, that I mean to laugh about it. We take safety incredibly seriously and this is probably one of the more challenging parts. If you only look into the crystal ball, it would be easy. So that said, I don't think anyone has any questions about that or anything else on that particular item, but.
I went out and did my first show like on at one and it's just like, that's very, very small amount of that, I think. And even at ten o'clock, it was really very little on the road. And what they were saying was in one place, one to three, and at that point your heads seemed like, and then we had four inches below an hour.
With a lot of factors to think in, you know, that go into it too. And either part of it also is understanding that when some schools cancel and some are open, we all have that sort of crazy cross pollination between teachers who live in one town and work in another and then have to deal with the kids. So I, I get all that and, and so we do, I want people to know, we take all that consideration. We also know that when we don't have school, there's lots of, you know, I would have a medical appointment this morning first thing and the hospitals run in full force. And so I know there's parents that are working who, you know, when their kids, when school's not open, have to then deal with, you know, childcare and figuring all that out. So there are pros and cons on both sides, but I just wanted everyone to know that. Take the word seriously. I consider myself a scientist, but probably look at too much data around weather reports and this morning, no, didn't quite get it right. So anyways, thank you for at least being patient and appreciative of us. All right. So with that said, I believe we're going to jump right into the budget, right? Yep. Let me get things dialed up here. And so we have a slideshow that we're going to run through today and there's a lot of slides and I'm going to move pretty quickly. The way I tend to build slide shows is that I put a little bit too much information in, but I also believe that they serve as a reference point. Folks who may want to revisit the presentation later, who may want to, who didn't attend the meeting, why I just scanned for what was shared. So for the sake of argument, I just want you to know that I'm going to move pretty quickly. If there's any points you want me to slow down or stop, I'm certainly happy to do that. So just some additional thoughts when you're in a superintendent, while the IS, first of all, I know you've had an incredibly busy couple of weeks, so I appreciate another night out, after a lot of nights out last week, and this is a big thing. I also want to thank you for the two week extension. I think it did help actually because a little bit deeper to the budget, recognizing that still only about thirty days on the job. And so I'm learning things every single day, but it really did help to get a little bit along with my understanding of the budget and shape it to some degree. Again, I do want to mention that in some of the places that we run through today, we have a lot of backup in detail that you won't see on this particular slideshow. We're going to be bringing the department chairs and building principles to you all in coming weeks. And so they're shortly available to answer questions, we'll do the best we can tonight, but they'll be here within, you know, in person, obviously to talk on the thirtieth and I think that in February about more specific. So I, I just like to jump right into the punchline. We're going to have a storyline, so we're going to go forward to the sort of the, the cliche, the, the end, the, the closing, and then we'll work backwards to the storyline. But last year, and this is net operating budget, so it will be your operating budget minus your revenue. The district spent around eleven point six million dollars. What we're bringing you tonight is what I would refer to as a two different budget scenarios. One is a level service budget. One is what I call a value add budget. Level service budget is a budget that's basically in effect maintain what we currently have in place and projected forward. So we would obviously meet requirements under collective bargaining agreements, increases in utilities, increases in the transportation contracts, things of that sort. So when we look at level service budget, I'm sure you're mostly were familiar with that concept. The budget is eleven point nine million, so it increases by about just under three percent. So the variance from last year around three thousand. In addition to that, we put together a value add budget, which is the superintendent's budget in effect. This is the budget, does have additional asks in it, has some additions, has some resources that we'll be asking for. And that is obviously because of those increases, the higher, you know, percentage increase from last year closer to five percent. I know that earlier, prior to my arrival, there was some sort of circulation of a number of around six percent. So we did try to push that down as part of good and what we're telling you again is open for discussion and debate among the committee because ultimately this budget become yours. And those kinds of decisions which we're asking for will be debated, I imagine, among this body. I think it's irresponsible not to talk about additional costs that are connected between towns and in districts, even though we talked about an operating budget, we have additional resources that are provided by the town. Most importantly, we have benefits. Benefits are paid by the town. So the benefits that we have for the coming year, understanding that we're still in process, Melissa Community War and Mission Law that are pretty high with about a thirteen percent increase. We're hoping it won't come in that high. But that's what we, we have in this particular model. So when you tally it all up, you add your level service budget, your benefits increase. The total liability to the town becomes on the level service budget a little over five percent. And on the value add budget, six point six and three quarter percent. Well, I just am starting with this and we're going to work backwards and then tell you a little story about your district, which you probably already know. Then we'll talk specifically about what's in the value add budget that we're asking for. Those would be the things we'd be discussing as a body, that you would be discussing with five. All right. So the, the, the process today is we're just going to sort of go through how we got here, talk a little bit about context of the district, show you some data points. Remind folks about strategic priorities and then review the asks, ultimately end up with a budget book, which you'll be getting copy of for access to, and then the summary of the budget. I did want to point out that I tried to include photos and images that reflect your district and things that are powerful to tell the story about who you are as a district. This particular photo is, and a lot of the photos in this are taken by Owen O'Brien Garvey, who is in digital photography and was willing to share these with me and I've included these throughout. He's just very talented young man and I just happened to bump into him at high school and he was taking some photos and he showed me and I'm like, I need those, sign them along. Again, process real quickly. My process for building budget historically is to sort of see it as a continuous process and this is something I developed back in Pittsfield, fairly basic, but the idea that you begin with data, you identify your aspirations. You come up with some actions, meet those aspirations, then you align your resources. Pretty simple, probably not that much more different than what most organizations do. So asking the question, what's happening? Where do you want to be? How do we get there? And what's the need to do this? In terms of school, what that looks like is, you know, for data, we look at outcomes, we look at enrollment, we look at our capital needs, our personnel, our programs. Our aspirations really are our strategic plan, our theories of action, of the improvement plans and the actions connected to the improvement plan. And then potentially even any audits you're going through, either through accreditation or through the Department of Education. Ultimately, you match up your resources, your budget and your grants to try to get those actions ultimately in your strategic plan map. Hope that makes sense to everybody. The challenge for me, of course, is I haven't been around here long enough to certainly go through this entire process, but I think it's a good solid process that in my opinion, your team has done at least in, in some part. I also talk when, at an annual basis, it's something consistently comes up, which is, you know, hey, you guys are always adding, you know, do you ever take anything away? It's always additive, additive, additive. And so I do believe really in planning and weeding is sort of an analogy, the idea that you're constantly thinking about ways in which you're adding programs that have higher impact. But you're also looking at those things where you might exchange, replace or eliminate to create and free resources. And so I think about the need for sort of a three hundred and sixty review related to programming, personal compliance side of personnel, then ultimately thinking about how do you also achieve your goal through, in this case, you're looking at personnel shifts, looking at how you apply one-time funding such as S R. And then looking at ways in which I talk about grant entrepreneurship or finding money to accomplish things that don't necessarily result in liabilities to the town. Your budget process so far, pretty straightforward. Your team did a lot of work before I arrived, strategic plan, staffing charts, improvement plans. You've seen all that. I got here about halfway through your, through the meetings with principals and the leads. And was able also to sit in a couple of meetings with the finance subcommittee. We're on the twenty-third and obviously you're tracking forward from here. So the context of our work really is our vision statement and our values. And again, it's just very important to open like any budget argument with reminding people why you exist and what you believe in. So again, I don't, I will not read all of it, but it's, it will be available on the slide with just things around, obviously, high quality and really the kinds of outcomes you want our students as they progress through the system. For me, it always boils down to three things, creating opportunities, striving for excellence and building community. And I think if you get those three things done in your school committee, in your school on community, you're doing a great job. The opportunity for me in Lennox is really this idea that we're, we're not a large district by any shape of how districts play out across the state. Yes, y'all do an incredible offering, a broad range of, of programs, both academic and co-curricular and a lot of specialized supports for students in the community. There's no question that excellence is something that is woven into the, the culture and fabric of, of the Lennox Public School. I've seen a high level of expectation for each other, for faculty, for students, and and obviously the idea is to try to ensure that students have the resources and teachers have the resources to do their best to work both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And then finally, the idea, idea of, of community and what's interesting obviously about this particular district, it is a district of choice. And so the idea that we bring different experiences table and connect students with each other, with their community and obviously with their future is really important. This particular slide is, slide's been used nationally around some reform work and it sort of sums up kind of why schools exist, you know, and what we hope to accomplish with kids as they track through with the idea that there's foundational academic work, there's preparation for college and career or post-secondary. And then obviously this desire to make sure that they have opportunities for personal enrichment and growth. So again, just a resource slide that I've thrown in here for folks who might want to learn more. Our data, Dennis Love, he's a friend of my son's. He was texting me last night saying, when are you calling school? Said, give me a ring at five in the morning. We'll start with demographics. This is just a slide that is going to give you a little bit of a snapshot of kind of your district and I call it a district on a page. And this is your enrollment as it stands. It's one more than I reported, I guess, at the last meeting. But so these numbers change a little bit every other, every, every week as kids migrate in and out. You don't have a lot of turnover. You have a little and that certainly will influence these numbers. Males outnumber females in the district by race ethnicity. Obviously, like many of our district, we're predominantly white. But obviously growing a bit more diverse in the area of Hispanic and multirace students. And then by selected populations, I'll just certainly run you through those acronyms. I mean, F L N E is first language and English. And E L L is English language learners, students with disabilities and then high needs and low income. Again, lower than state average, but still seeing increasing numbers in those particular populations, which demand particular resources and interventions. I'm going to spend a few minutes on enrollment because I know we're also going to talk about choice later today. So I thought I would just embed it here. Your overall enrollment, so sort of some basic categories that I tried to put on a very simple table. It continues to increase and has increased for the last five years. You're at the, really the high mark in quite a while, while your foundation enrollment goes down, which obviously is being impacted, influenced your overall enrollment by your choice numbers, which again, we'll hit in just a second. The percentage of high need students is slightly increasing. That's pretty consistent again across the region, across the state. But that does create the demand, high need students or students who are low income, have a particular disability, might have a language barrier. So again, all those students would sort of fall to the general category of high needs. The English language learner population is fairly stable. I sort of put that as, as a balance. And then the students with disabilities, we actually have fewer students with disabilities than the most districts. And I think it's because we do a lot of early intervention. And Brian will be talking about that in his presentation. It doesn't mean that the intensity of the students that we have is not great, because in some cases it is. But just want to sort of mention, these are some key enrollment trends that I thought would be important. So takeaway is enrollment's rising, student needs are rising, the foundation enrollment, they impact choice and road. Just a quick slide through from the census, this comes up, virtual, virtual region planning, virtual benchmarks, which get a lot of information if you're just, if you're sort of a data geek and you want to look around, but this particular one is a snapshot of Lennox and you'll see the average household size, family size is pretty low, which will again is the driver that's impacting your, your foundation enrollment. But I was hyped, I was heartened by the three hundred and sixty and the thirty-five and thirty-nine. Kind of a weird spike there, but because that's actually a family generating age span. So whether that generates in the front end will, will yet to be seen. But interesting data is we think forward about long-term enrollment. Mark last year's shared enrollment projection with you all, I organize them just a little bit differently. There's two organizations that have done projections that we can sort of reflect against. And we have a school development council and virtual region planning commission. So their enrollment projections are listed above. For actual enrollment is in, is in the black band and then I broke it out by both K twelve and pre-K through twelve. Some researchers don't like to include pre-K because it's a variable number. And in many cases, pre-K programs are not all same. Some are on a three days a week, some five days a week, some half days. And so they say just get pre-K out, focus on K twelve to get you a better sense. But for the sake of argument, I put it here, all this has been done by first in-out migration, choice, housing. And the good news is that you're currently outpacing your projections. So you can see where your actual is in seven fifty-two and seven seventy-six and actually we're actually projected for twenty twenty-four. So, you know, the trend continued here in this shape. I was asked at the last meeting to just provide some information about where resident students go to school. This is just a quick snapshot of how many go to like local, our local public school, how many go out of the district, other public school, how many home school. And how many go to private profile and think other one than this one year's kind of COVID bubble. Left, you're holding at about eighty-six percent, which is solid retention. I had mentioned that at the last meeting, in any community, any community, you're going to have students who are going private profile, home school, in some cases outsourced to some local neighboring public school, in many cases because they've got relatives, parents, a teacher there, there are factors that often influence why kids might leave the home district. This is the resident choice grid that you've already received. We did an update on it. We'll talk about this a little bit later, but I just wanted to point out kind of we were headed with choice. We'll refer to this a little bit later, but I put it in the slideshow for reference. Is your choice trend, which I shared you at the last meeting, obviously choice overall is on the increase. We're targeting, we're expecting around three hundred and thirteen based on the data that we have currently. And then the other two questions, I think, I was asked at the last meeting was where do we get kids from and where do we send kids to? So this is our receiving list. So this is where we're receiving students from and really our, our big receiving sending district to us is Pittsfield. We had a pretty big jump this past year of over twenty kids. And then other than that, it's, you know, really our neighboring districts, Lee, Berkshire, Hill, Central Burke, kind of probably depend on kind of where you live and what connection you can have in town. And then sending side. And you can see that where we send students to primarily, it's a little bit of reversal. Some of our students go to Lee, some go to Berkshireville and then just a smattering of other places.
How do we get fractions of kids?
Probably part of a year. Yeah, yeah. So actually, in the case of on TACA, which is a virtual, there's two virtual churches full in the state. We get it, we have, there's a different finance system for that in terms of what we're charging. So tenth of percentage could actually make a difference in terms of what we're actually able to claim. So.
Jake, is this not when you sent it, Connor? Is this not?
No, because that's not choice. That's tuition.
That's tuition now.
And I have that number somewhere, but I don't think I put it in slideshow.
I think the number that Dusty has is nine and that's what I believe that we have.
So just a few other indicators to close up this data section. And, you know, there's like huge amount of data. If you look down in the corner, I put a hyperlink to Dusty profile. If you want to look, they have more data that you can, that you can even tackle, but just some key indicators, you think are really strong indicators, rate attendance rate, ninety-five is considered like the, the high mark. And so we're just about right there. Our chronic absenteeism is really low. We're a very stable district. Our kids are finishing the mass recommended curriculum. We've got small class size. Kids are taking arts, they're passing ninth grade. Generally, they're all good markers when we compare them out to the state. So just other things that maybe you haven't seen as part of your historical presentation, but I think you're still worth paying attention to. And if you want any point down in the future, I can do a deeper data dive. Your faculty and staff, I, in order for me to learn the district, I like to organize by sort of cost center we're building and then by role. And often it's organized by units and I like to see kind of how the roles play out. So I went through the process with our staff last week of really trying to unpack like how many people do we have in different role types under the teachers? And so this gives you a general sense of how many teachers we have that at the middle and high school and at Morris and sort of where they teach and what areas they're in because we often throw around interventionist and para probably very loosely and it's sometimes important to understand like, you know, what's the difference between instructional para and a supervisory para and a total one para. So those are, those are categorized and I think they have very particular tasks that they do. I have two numbers in red. I just wanted to call those out because those are positions that are not currently filled. We have a math intervention at the middle high school which is not be filled and with our librarian resigned prior to the start of the calendar year and that position's open. So if you've seen two postings for positions for math and for library, that's why you're seeing those positions posted. So again, I use this, this is just food for thought for you all. I think it's a neat exercise to go year to year and sort of see how these divisions are changing or not and how you're shifting them around. It does help you to understand how you're allocating. And you might want more information after you look at this from principals about how some of these positions are being used. The points of pride, you have a lot of them. I'm just going to run through real quick. You're just a really strong academic district and I think you all know that. You take great pride in that. The points of pride, you have a lot of them. I'm just gonna run through real quick. You're just a really strong academic district, and I think you all know that. You take great pride in that. These are just, I'm not doing a full M cap presentation, I promise. Wanna hit a couple of key things. This is English language arts. I aggregated three grade, three through eighth with not including grade ten. This is the percentage of kids who meet or exceed um, the uh state standard, and you can see you are basically uh at the top of the heap with Graylock, which is gonna be a pretty consistent pattern across um the next couple of slides. These are strong numbers. Um, again, the same thing in math, grade three, grade eight, actually, we um outpace Graylock by a point. And so again, really good performance there, and you can see that even with the COVID year, we saw a little bit of a depression, which everyone did. Um, you know, we kind of held our own and um the uh also another number that I looked at student growth, and you might say, well, your kids are all smart. They come from you know, wealthy families and they come in with economic advantage and they all go to summer camp and have all this extra stuff, but there's another measure, which is how far in the district take a student, move a student forward, and that's considered growth or a value proposition, and so your, any growth number over fifty is considered strong. So uh, these are again, strong numbers, and there's other districts in the county that have strong numbers, but it's good to have both really high performance and strong growth. That's like a, that's like the double win. But just wanted to again, call that out.
Yeah, but the student growth just for anybody out here is based, at the end of your student is based on cohort students around our day who have similar characteristics, so it's not based, you know, you could have a top student who's in the, you know, low growth set out of a, a student who hasn't typically um, performed the way some others have, who makes great growth and is not in the hundred, so it's really a value add. Ron Curran doesn't like that.
I know he doesn't.
But it's really the value that's been added at any given year.
Yeah, all big measures are imperfect. I should put that right on the table. No one measure is a perfect measure, but you kind of look at the collective measures together and you have to piece together a picture. That's kind of the way I like to approach these sorts of things. So again, math, strong growth. Um, I wanted to call out, Brenda sent me this graph, which I thought was worth sharing, and this is a graph in the elementary school in which um um, the Morris students, it really should even say Atlanta Public Schools, it should say Morris students um, are in blue, and these are high needs students, the students who are low income, special education, English language learners fall in the high-risk categories as compared to the state period. You can see that um pretty much across the board, we outperform the state, and I think that that you know, one of the, the key goals and uh and the Commonwealth has been to close the gap between um, students who are performing uh in the aggregate and students who are high risk, and in many cases, Morris is demonstrating through the data that they're doing that.
Let me just ask the question, is that the questions on the M cap?
The question.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we know um descriptors.
Yeah, right, and yeah, it was kind of a picture. I just thought um yeah, and we, again, happy to do a deeper dive into the M cap that people wanted at some point, but yeah. So jumping to the high school, these are graduation rates, another measure that's kind of a common measure that everyone pays attention to. Um, Lennox Public Schools is the pink line on this graph. And every other district in Berkshire County are the gray lines. You can see that you're at the top of the heap in, in terms of um um, population rate, so I think that's um not anything that probably surprises you all, but it's, it's good for me. Um, this crazy little bubble is off of um the website that we created, uh, berk12.org. If you're interested in going there, we have a dashboard we put together. You can look a lot of different data points. This pulls out F A T scores. Um, the um the um, the two act seats have reading and writing in one, math on the other, and so depending on how high or to the right you move, gives you a sense of how your students are performing. So in this particular graph, Lennox is a little pinked out, I guess, here, and so um performing really at a high level, six hundred. Um, uh, the uh reading and writing, um, that is Graylock up there, so they uh did have higher performance than us, but then on math, we're over here around five seventy-five, and we're slightly um further to the right, uh, meaning that we're the highest performing math F A T district and, and, and in Berkeley's. If you wanna look trend over time, you can go to the active dashboard and it'll show you how our SATs move around over five years. This little teaser over here is just encourage you to go there and check out the data. We built that dashboard hoping that people would go there. Um, your high school offers a lot of course areas, a lot of courses. It's really kind of mind-blowing. You offer as much as you do for a school your size, so I just thought it'd be important to just call some of that out. Uh, and I'm not gonna read these, but give you a sense of kind of the range of courses from APs to elected that your, your high school is offering. Really with um a lot of input and investment by your teachers, they're developing these courses in teaching, um, what I would refer to a lot of preps, which means they're teaching courses in multiple areas and multiple sort of um, you know, course titles within a content area to ensure the kids have, uh, written the elected. Beyond high school, again, this is from the work site, uh, about three quarters of your kids. Um, usually between any given year, um, seventy-five percent and eighty-two percent of your students are reporting that they're heading out to college. I can get post-secondary completion data. I don't have it for this presentation. If you're interested in that at some point, so I can tell you what your kids, how your kids are doing six years out. Um, sometimes that depresses people because a lot of kids don't finish for a variety of reasons. But um, I do think this is important because obviously your district is one that aspires to academic uh excellence, and so a lot of our kids go up to college, but I did wanna point out that we've also, your high school is building two pathways in, in business and health areas that will hopefully help non-college-bound students to navigate through um certifications uh to leave high school, either with continued training, not college, and or into the job market. Is your college acceptances, which again are pretty unbelievable. I've done this in a couple of districts and this is a really impressive list of colleges that your kids are getting accepted to. This is last year's class and this year's class, the far. Um, so two years. Um, but I um, yeah, I won't say too long, but I, I, I can dwell on this for a while. It's a really strong school, but this is um, so again, um, we also have a, a culture of wanting to ensure that students have experiences outside the classroom. Uh, these are the sports teams you offer, standalone work teams on the left and cooperative teams on the right. Obviously, a lot of districts are shrinking around the county, cooperative teams becoming more common, uh, and so um we, we appreciate that we can co-op uh, in football, um, with the, and one of the students that I'm interviewing tomorrow talks specifically about the football experience is formative. So we're looking for that we're able to make sure kids get access to what they want, and then beyond that, just kind of an unbelievable list of clubs and activities that you all offer, and I offer that just up to the general public. I made a pitch at the last meeting for kids to get involved. This is the second pitch. And then a great faculty who, um, this is a picture from just a week ago, um, where a principal Kelly was uh brought in a trainer who worked on literacy with her teachers, just has done working on that. It's a, uh, it's a teaching core in Morris, um, this particular example, not satisfied. Even with excellence, constantly pushing themselves to want to do more, so they're acting as your coaches, your advisors, your mentors, teaching overloads, teaching double sections, so can't speak highly enough about them. And then really a commitment to quality facilities, teaching, learning tools and resources, you know, you have a one point now, like many districts have, have um, sort of forced to coming out, uh, coming through COVID, but really a commitment to ongoing access the tools and curriculum, which we'll be talking about tonight. And I know a commitment to the middle and high school renovation, um, long term. So priors and aspirations, um, I won't spend too much time here, but I, I really believe in alignment. I, this actually was talked about in one of the interviews the other day, and this is a graphic I've used before. And which sort of explains how you move from district plan to educator plan, and I hope it's something that um we can work with the admin team on getting into alignment so that we do reflect right down to the educational plans, things that we're aspiring to in the district plan. This is your plan for fifteen, twenty. Now, I could spend a lot of time on it, um, just wanted you to have a little bit of background. Um, but you all redid your um plan, which has had four theme due to eight priority areas. These areas will show up in, in our value add budget, so I thought it'd be important to call them out. Um, these are just some selected action steps that were identified from um those particular domains, those areas, things like a, a calendar that supports professional development, investment technology renewal, a budget process that engages the town. Excited to have folks in the town side with us here today. Thank you for being here. Um, you know, curriculum development, renewal. Um, obviously leadership's on everyone's mind right now, and getting um really excited um to have Dr. Collins um onboard, ugly or coaching onboard. Um, so that continuity is very, very important, and really integrating this multi-tiered system support, which you've heard about. Um, this nests down to the improvement plan, which you heard on the twelfth, um, December twelfth presented to you by, by Tim and Brenda. These are just some talking points that came out of that, that were sort of key things. Um, I'm responding to the social emotional needs of our students, meeting the diverse student body, maintaining a tradition of excellence. Those sort of distilled down, I think there's a lot of overlap between the two plans. They're written really side by side saying, what do you think overlap and a lot of uh overlap around safe school environments, positive student behaviors uh in the school, social emotional learning, um you know, thinking about writing across the curriculum, something that both schools are focused on and obviously supporting educator development. You know, I'm going fast. But um, really, we do wanna get to the punchline, so putting it all together, and I do really do believe that not everything costs money. Sometimes it's reorganizing time and resources you already have. Um, we wanna ensure that we're able to continue successfully implement um what we believe are existing programs that work. Um, and that's everything from the comprehensive academic program you just talked about to the range of co-curricular offering, and obviously the last one on the list of very important focuses really thinking about the optimal class size, which I think is again, is real positive of the Lennox Public School. You need to continue to reflect our strategic plan. We're gonna have math, the connected technology, connected curriculum instruction, connecting inclusivity, connecting mental health. And so again, um, trying to reflect resource investments that advance uh the aims of the strategic plan. Um, clearly navigating leadership transition, not necessarily an expense item, although you're paying people to do their job. But it's an important part, I think, of the next year. Both the superintendent and principal's office, you still have early-stage administrators, um, such as Brian and student services, um, doing a fantastic job, and even your committee. You know, the need to constantly be challenging ourselves around development, leadership. Um, everyone is navigating post-COVID. At some point, we'll stop talking about post-COVID. But right now, we know um layering, social emotional supports, intervention acceleration. And this third one was really important. I thought it was an interesting one. I hadn't thought about it until I got here and uh, and my admin team saying, we need more filter, we gotta keep experiencing this, and that's something I actually did lose during COVID, and we wanna make sure that we get kids out of the walls in the schools and in the community and, and to this amazing place we live in the Berkshires, all these cultural resources uh that are available to them, that we hope can integrate with their studies, what we'll be talking about as a path, like tools and facilities, um, some tax purchases in today's budget. Renewal cycle on technology, a new CAD app or engineering program. We got work still to do in Power School. We're making some headway on that. Um, technology and security is a constant, um, it's a constant battle. We got a note today from Randy saying we got another phishing thing going on. We gotta be ready for this and careful of this, so it's constantly really mining that, um. You all are gonna be, we're gonna be preparing another statement of interest for the MSBA for the middle high school. And then thinking about the S R funds, and then I, I did write some things. This is probably stated for, for your interim superintendent and thinking about ways which you can kind of look forward. But um constantly thinking about where you're heading into the future and how you can build a stronger district, and you know, I have a thing for early childhood. I'd love to see another pre-K classroom um getting created here. Um, I think you got room for getting more grants in the district. To be honest with you, um, one of the best grant-making districts in this, in the, in the uh county is Berkshire Hills. Did an amazing job getting money that it doesn't rely on uh ax, asking the taxpayers to pony up. They go after competitive grants and they do a great job, so I think it was carving out some resources to think about grant writing might be a good investment down the road. I know I talked about that seventy-six percent of kids going to college. It's a strong number, but that means twenty-four percent not. And so constantly thinking about ways in which we're helping the non-college-bound students navigate their way through high school to be prepared to be successful when they be. Got a lot of other things on here, which I'd be happy to talk about additionally, but we wanna move along to the numbers. And so off we go. Um, do you wanna talk through this or?
Sure.
Are you good? All right.
Good.
They get tired of my voice.
So we'll get into the numbers, but we wanted to talk really about what creates the budget. And the operating budget is what funds the school district aside from grants, aside from um special revenues like athletic gift receipts and school choice. And um outside of the town contributions for benefits, that includes health insurance and um Berkshire County Retirement Assembly. Is included in what the town puts in addition to our operating budget. Um, our fiscal year is July first through June thirty. And all funds by June thirty must be expended, which means money out the door, bills are paid. Um, or encumbered, which means we have a known expense and we've encumbered it. And typically those um have to be taken care of fairly quickly during the year, but you, you actually can encumber a second year if you know if something arises and you can't spend it, but you don't do that. Um, or return to the town. So if you don't have any known expenses and you have a hundred thousand dollars left on June thirty, that goes back to the town's general fund, which goes into their free cash. I mean, um, the net budget, what we are calling the net budget is the operating budget minus the revenues that the school district has um access to, like the revolving funds, like school choice. And um the, get our appropriation, the district gets their appropriation through the town vote, which occurs. I always get this wrong. First Thursday in May. So this, um, this is how the, the state actually looks at a budgeting process. So when we have our budget amount, our request for funds, the state has a foundation budget, which if you recall, was on a previous slide, four hundred and seventy-five resident students, who are there, they know, and the amount that we receive for them. That becomes our foundation budget. Foundation budget minus what the state says is the minimum the town must contribute to educate their children, which is a formula that they use equals state aid. So when we have a thirteen or twelve million dollar operating budget, there's some state aid that the, the town receives that comes off. It doesn't all filter to taxpayers. There's state aid that does come off of that. Um, and then often all funds, all spending is outside the operating budget, which, which would again, new grants. Um, S R grants and the town insurance and uh retirement assistance.
So just real quickly, um wanted, I mean, feel like I live in this world because this is the entire conversation itself coming right now is how I would petition, so I did wanna point out that the likelihood of getting additional aid from the state, as you probably all know, is not high. It's probably um comparatively low. What you will likely get is some sort of treatment on an annual basis, which is um a to some degree, it's a symbolic number. It's the state assigned to every student. If that district doesn't qualify for additional aid, it's usually thirty dollars, sixty bucks. It's sixty this year. It doesn't amount to a whole heck of a lot, and so what happens is your budgets grow that more and more is being um, is being pressed towards the taxpayers all over well. You all are um really receiving about seventeen and a half percent from the state, which is what they're always gonna contribute. Um, but I also wanted to point out that outside operating money is important, and it's, it is a, a real dollar figure that the town provides, but the other thing I think is just fascinating to me is that you can also do a lot of offsetting with your grants, if you can get, get into the entrepreneurial mindset, write grants and be able to manage it. So it's just something think about. I put a lot of chapter seventy reference fly to the end of the show, not to bore anyone anymore than I already have. So um, you're help, you're welcome to look at those if you'd like.
The amount that we did receive in twenty-three for, um, you know, they call it permanent was sixty dollars per student and the total dollar was twenty-eight thousand.
Great.
So that's just how much they would So that's just how much they would, we're, we're just nothing. So these are our budget considerations and a lot of this you probably have heard in previous years. But our personnel expenses, we are a service educational organization, accounts for 84% of the budget. And the amount of salaries are influenced by the collective bargaining agreement for the most part. The majority of our employees belong to a collective level in the area. We also include a reserve or contingency amount that is necessary for unexpected costs such as out placements. Something that may come up that we just didn't anticipate. You know, miscalculation in an area. So there is, there is reserve that is listed in every budget and it's a separate line item that I, I give to you at the end. We are estimating 3% inflation, which is much better than what it was estimated to be last year. I think we were looking at seven or eight percent. There is a special ed tuition increase anticipated. Our district will see about an eight percent overall in special ed increase with this value-added budget. But the special ed tuition increase was 14% set by the labor standards, Department of Labor standards. We have a new governor. So this new governor has until March to deliver the budget. Their second year, we would have the numbers by now, which usually I think the second Wednesday in January that we received the governor's budget. But they do have extra time when they are in their first year. So we most likely won't see any state numbers until March. We do have some staffing changes. We have two, four retirements to date. This could change. We have two admin assistants, one teacher and one instructional paraprofessional. That have let us know that they're retiring at some point in those.
I probably can do the next slide. I think this is.
So we have contractual obligations of paraprofessionals, food service and administrative support. What we tend to call, you know, group together and say, unity, those areas are entering a new contract year in 2024. That the negotiations have not begun yet. So that will be an impact on next year's budget. Our certified employees, which are the teaching, the licensed personnel within the instructional staff and, and service staff. Are entering year two of a three-year contract, as are the custodians. And administrators, many of the contracts have negotiation clauses or a set percentage are re-put into them. So that's all included in this, in this budget. Additions to staff in this value add are totaling for to support. Instructional paraprofessionals, a certified reading interventionist at the high school level. For English and a technician support. We have the technology director. And then we have an application support person who has helped with the rollout of Power School and does training with teachers. And sort of as a liaison with new programs and software with our staff. That leaves the technical hardware spot sort of empty. And so there is a request for a technician. We're entering year two of a five-year transportation contract. The increase is 2.5%, 5% and it will be effective July 1st. And as I said a bit earlier, special ed anticipated increase total for all areas, 8%.
So these aren't too bad. I can run through these if you want. Just expenditures that haven't been realized during COVID. And the goal of that is to return, you've heard this before. Really thinking about, I had mentioned to the finance subcommittee the other day that I sit on the Center of Berkshire School Committee. And, and I've had a concern about the number of positions that we've added to Ether. And then what happened when Ether is gone. And I think we do have some positions on Ether and the idea is for those that we feel strongly about retaining. How do we begin to transition those onto operational funds? Obviously, benefits are still in process renewal cycle. We talked about the MSBA. I heard pretty consistently through a lot of narratives, when you get the budget book, you'll be able to read those. That space at the middle of high school is of a premium enough concern. And then on top of that, you have, you know, science labs that absolutely can be contemporized. You got some engineering sort of physical plant challenges, your, you know, your locker rooms, things of that sort you all know need. And we will, we're bringing a capital budget that I hope to, to expand to not only have, hey, here's how we think we're going to use money that the town is providing this year. But also how you might look forward. And I know that you've done that work. So, and then finally, we just want to make sure we, we remain in, in an upward budget. That reflects the fiscal reality of the town while we protect and continue the high-quality work that's happening in the district. This is the budget again, without the animations, so you can kind of see it start to finish. Get a second look at it. And I know we're giving you a lot today. The idea hopefully that you, you go home, you study it, you got a lot of questions at our next meeting and we dig into it more. Some of the additions which Melissa has already pointed out and include, you know, what we think are priority needs and ed programming. You know, retaining the number of sections that we currently have, two and a 3K and 3D screen. You know, I'm kind of repeating myself now, freaking base field trips. So let's just jump right into it. Melissa walked through a series of ads. All right. So we called out the, where are the value ads, right? So this is our shortlist of what we're referring to as value ads. These are the positions that make up the difference between, in effect, the value-add budget and the level of service budget. And these are the things that I think we'll be asking the principals and the department leads to talk about in more detail. And that for you, for you all to discuss and debate and make decisions around. But I'll give you a quick preview. You know, obviously in the improvement plan, Brenda talked about wanting to complete the science curriculum amplifying grades two and three. And buy additional materials in the areas of ELA and, and social studies. And so we're marking that out at around $31,000. Melissa may have to help you with some of these Esser positions, but I know that we have additional school adjustment counselors. That are paid for either entirely or partially on Esser. And so we're trying to do sort of a waypoint this year to begin to move parts of those positions onto the operating budget. Because certainly the argument at building levels, those are important positions based on the level of interventions that are occurring in the school.
So I can, at the elementary level, there is two. And they were both point eights and this year they became 1.0s. So it went from 1.6 to two. With point four coming from being served. So what that, that 14, 725 grants is knocking it down to point two total coming from the Esser. And so they're point nine operating, point one Esser each.
So it's still a ways to go. To get an operating, am I getting that right or?
No, because we only started with point two each. No, there's not a ways to go.
Thank you. Thank you. Additionally, Brenda has asked for additional support in the area of literacy to support literacy blocks. And that position would be not full of 9.75. And would also be involved in additional supervision. And as I mentioned in the finance subcommittee, one thing I know about Brenda. And I've seen her do really skillfully is manage her people and time. So that she can get teachers together, working together in curriculum, looking at student work, looking at data, getting trained in new programs as we did today that I was there. And so these sorts of positions do help for that to happen. So I don't think we have any questions on these, but we can just keep going down the list and we can hold questions. We can ask them now. Brenda's here, Brian's here. I hate to put Jeremiah on the spot today, but his first day at school. Middle High School has a, they have currently have a math interventionist for the middle school. And interventionist by nature, as you all know, is used as a block during the day in which students are able to get sort of tier two and small construction. It's a common practice deemed an effective practice on helping kids to catch up and stay on grade level with their peers. So this particular ask is for an equivalent literacy interventionist. Now, I do want to point out that we have not been able to fill the math interventionist this year. So we continue, I think ELA will probably be an easier built fit. But we are looking for someone who's got some direct reading experience, not just general ELA experience in the way it's been described to me. So additionally to that, field trips, you've heard that talked about. And you all have probably have the history of pre-COVID and during COVID and now post-COVID. But the idea that we're, we want to make sure that we reinstate these curriculum-based field trips and ensure that all kids have access. And then maybe I'll have you describe the SAC position. I think I missed a point, what there.
Yes, so. If you recall, there was an addition of one school adjustment counselor to the middle high school to make two at that building. The one that was added is, was in this year fully funded by the Esser grant. So this again pulls it back by point one. So point one to operating and point nine to Esser. And the Esser grants we have until September of '25. So you know, that will need attention for a plan.
Because that is a long way to go.
Yes.
So you know, the question will rarely arise, you know, do we need this additional school adjustment counselor? And at this point, I would suspect that both of my principals who argue hard for their school adjustment counselor, given the level of incident they see in the school. But we also have a duty to be able to bring back to you a documentation and evidence, right? Data that reflects the kind of work that they're doing, that caseload, the sorts of interventions they're doing. We want to make sure that we're convincing you all that, that's the money that we're investing. So. And then under special education.
Sorry, Jake, just one question on the LMHS. Is the, the interventionist would be certified unit A staff? And so that looks, is that probably a step one salary assumption?
No, I can explain that. Without the interventionist, the existing teachers have to teach additional sections. And so what that does is take into account the already budgeted additional sections without it. And that's the variance. Yes, it's in the $70,000 range. So masters, maybe.
So the last two positions are kindergarten paraprofessional. We have a, a, three students here on the slide that have a very intensive set of needs in our pre-K program, moving into kindergarten. And this is likely a necessary position to support the needs of those students in that particular classroom. So the pair will be working with all three. In addition, the regular parent in the room and the teacher. And Brian, I'm sure without being, with being very careful to protect confidentially, these students can probably talk a little bit more about that when he presents. But this is not unusual that when students arrive in a district or are diagnosed with a particular set of disabilities, we do have to think about. Whether it's a one-to-one or additional supports. And just keep in mind generally that you all do a really nice job in terms of being very efficient with your special attending. When we look at it comparatively to other districts and even statewide. And finally, this idea of technician, which is, you know, is it, you know, I used to use the argument, is the best, best use of your time to have. I use this as a very kind of general example, but is it the best use of your time to have your principal on supervising the cafeteria? I would argue no. Have your, have your principal doing the work of supporting teaching and learning. It's good for the principal to be in the cap, right? You know, helping to make connections and evaluating and, you know, being present and visible. Just not that being the primary thing they do. And I would say the same thing goes with Randy McCloud as our IT director. Not sure it's a great idea to have him running around changing printer cartridges and unjamming things, things of that sort. This particular position is really the day-to-day stuff that goes into the problem solving to keep the stuff running. The equipment running is probably the easiest way to put it. And certainly there are other ways to think about this, but we have put a full technician into this as an entry-level position. All that tallies up to 235. And you know, if you want to just walk through the slide.
Yeah. So this is, every year, the district has to submit, it's called the end-of-year financial report. And this is what Desi. This is broken down from that report submitted to Desi and it shows where the funds that we have to run the district are extended. So you can see benefits is up on the top left at just under 20%. Administration at 3.1. Instructional leadership is a small percentage. Teachers besides the benefits. Is the, one of the highest, is the highest grouping, but that's where we want the money to go. So this just gives you an idea of, based upon our program areas, what percentage is being expended out of the budget? This is 2021 information.
So this one is now, this is 2021 too?
Yeah, this is the last year that they have on Desi for the information. But you can see this Lennox is there in the middle highlighted in yellow. And you can see how we compare with other districts here in the area. And we're not out of line in many of the category expenditures. We do have, as I said, 40.7% for the instructional teaching staff, which is a good percentage. And the rest sort of falls in line with the other districts in the, in this area.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things that just came to mind for me in this, and, and I do really want to be careful. Because we've done a lot of unpacking of this data as part of our South County project. And it's not always a perfect apple-to-apples comparison. So you have to really own the position by the position. One person might call a coach, another call the interventionist and someone call this or that, right? So getting lined up is a little bit tricky, but I think there are two things. One is your admin is, is very, is very lean. You know, comparatively. So I think that's good. And I think you know that because your administrators are basically in the room right now. And the good news is that your teachers are higher and I like that. I like to see more resources in that teaching line. Because that's really where the money should be as close to the classroom as possible. Anyway, some food for thoughts.
I'm glad you did say that because it is dependent on where each district is reporting the expenses.
All right, just a couple other things. This is basically kind of looking by program area. And looking at the totals for each of these areas in the last year's FY23 budget as compared to the 24 value-add budget. The, the larger budget we're bringing to you all and the variance is there. And you get some sense of sort of where the changes are. And some of those changes, as you know, are reflected in the positions that we just talked about. The additional teachings position, the technician. And I do want to point out in some cases, the way that you code these, right, might be at a building level. Rather than a cost center. So that, is that correct, Melissa?
So this is, yes, it's at the building level because the, for instance, student services. The, the staff may be working either at LMHS or Morris, but they're in that budget.
Well, helpful. All right. And then move along. That just gives you a sense of how it breaks out by sort of category. In terms of spending, obviously the highest spending at the middle and high school. Followed by the elementary school, food and services, right down the line. Of course, you can break these expenses to the two builders if you wanted to do that too. With the third category being your central office, which operates out of an office across the hall.
Um Jake, this might be a Melissa question, the the technology variance was like ninety thousand, it was roughly twice. The technician costs, what's the other delta there on technology?
So you recall last year, we did some accounting changes, there were software and hardware expenses into. Technology, we continued with some of that this year, some accounts that were still there, but there are new programs, um, software that's. Uh, been requested and um the power school renewal, things like that in there as well.
But we can, I I can probably give you, and it will be in the budget book, right, we'll have a more detailed breakout. Under the tech line, it will actually show that specifically, but even that may not be enough detail, if you want to go deeper, we're happy to say.
Here's why we're buying. Yes, after we talk about Randy, also, it just.
Yeah.
That's the one remembering versus a couple of years ago, our our technology department is is growing rapidly.
And there is, um, we were able to, uh. Is it Zoom that we paid out of the grant, I believe so. We don't have the grant for that this year, so that's part of it as well.
Okay, we're almost at the end, um, just to just a slide that just kind of summed up what I said earlier in terms of overall. Personal number, personnel and other expenses. And then this is the revenue breakdown, um, I'll let you walk through this.
Sure, um, so. You can see that we've applied more choice receipts uh in twenty-four than we had done in twenty-three. Uh, remember when we first gave the, and I said, wait till December, we'll get the December number, well, the December number was larger. So we were able to uh safely remove more. Funding there to offset the budget expense, so the variance is a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh tuition receipts, these are Richmond tuition and any other tuition such as uh. Pre-K, things like of that nature, we're utilizing ten thousand dollars more. In this budget to offset and circuit breaker has increased, our special ed. Expenses have increased and those that are reimbursable. Via circuit breaker um have increased, so we're able to see a little bit more, about twenty-five thousand dollars more. In the circuit breaker and that's a three-year process, so you have the expenses, you claim it, you receive the funding. In the second year and then you allocate it in the third year towards the budget. Um, so the seventy-six to forty-four FY twenty-four budget, we're receiving those. Those receipts right now quarterly. The fifty-one to fifty-nine is what we're spending this year that we received last year. And then other receipts are um. A little bit of athletics, that account is a little shaky right now, we've got to get more gate receipts in to build it up. Um, theater, outside work, people coming in to use our buildings, use the facilities. Things of that nature, all combined, um, total of about thirty-one five. And you do see a drop there of ten-five and due to athletics and we're just starting to. Begin to get more use of facilities funds in.
So just, uh, I I'd ask Melissa, even though it's not part of operating, just to sort of give an overview. The grants in Esser, because I thought it's relevant to the conversation because. You may decide as a group that. You know, hey, that's way too much money to add to that, yeah, but maybe we hedge our bet and try a position out on Esser for a year. And sort of, yeah, go that route to see if it's effective, so. I want to make sure that folks understood both where we get additional money and uh and then answer, so that'll be on the next slide.
All right, talk about these.
Yeah, please.
So the first uh four grants listed under the estimated grant total are entitlement grants. Those are grants that we receive each year, they're not competitive, we're not. Trying to get money away from, you know, we're not trying to compete with another district. Um, so those are entitlement grants and we've been receiving those, we will continue to receive those again. Next year, um, the estimate is very similar to the amount that we've received in this year. Sometimes depending on the federal government, you might get a little bit more, you might get a little bit less, um. Prior to the pandemic, they would decrease by about two or three percent. Now we see them increasing just a little bit instead of decreasing, so. But it's fairly level with what we've received this year, the pathways grant will continue. That is competitive, we will have to apply and we will have to win the grant monies, but um we received seventy-five this year. Most likely we'll receive seventy-five next year, if not a little bit more, but. I'm unfamiliar with the the pattern of that grant, so I was a little conservative and knocked it down to seventy. And then we get, we do receive private grants, um. From Berkshire to Conic, um, at Burke twelve, sometimes we receive some, so we're estimating about seven thousand from. Private grants. The capital appropriation amount is. Based upon my last conversation with the town manager. Right now at four hundred thousand, which is a little bit more than what we received last year. Um, we received three seventy-two hundred. Um, and then an additional appropriation of a special town meeting of a hundred and fifty, I believe. So we'll, right now we're penciled in to receive four hundred thousand next year of capital funds. So we wanted to give a a relief funds update, Esser update, and. As you know, we've received three rounds of Esser funding, Esser one. Um, was received shortly after the start of the pandemic. And that amount was ninety-four thousand, that's completely expended. We uh spent it on PPE, air quality adjustments, um. Air units, air quality units, filters and summer programming. Esser two, um, we we received three ninety-two, seven eighty-one, we do still have a hundred and eleven thousand roughly remaining. That will be expended by September of twenty-three, we will be using uh. To pay for substitutes, to pay for remediation work after school tutoring. Maybe some um programming at the middle and high school level after school, uh, that will be used up. We do still have the need for substitutes due to people having to be out with um. The virus, so we're able to use that money for that purpose as well. And then Esser three, this is the the big one, eight ninety-three, four thirty-two is what we received. We do still have seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, that must be expended. Um, we initially had. Put in some. Uh, capital work to the middle and high for many splits, I think we need to revisit that. That request and amendment grant. And work with, I'll work with Jake and administration, other administrators to figure out. Where our priorities are to spend that by twenty twenty-four.
All right, so here we are back to the beginning again, just reminding people what picture is. And then this is just your um bottom line grid. So, um, if we, the the two lines. Two rows going across the top, top row is the value add budget, which is the higher one, second one is the level service. Can see where we were in FY twenty-three, you can see where we were in FY twenty-four. The change in dollar, the change in percentage, we take away the revenue. The black line in the middle and then we get the net, which is what we're reporting to you all on that first slide. Which is a four nine eight on the value add budget, the two nine five on the level service. And again, um, I didn't mean to gloss over these positions, um, this will obviously be a point of discussion for the committee. Um, and so I put the emphasis on a second time just to make sure you have them. And then, um, Melissa, the work in the budget book, we're gonna have that out pretty quickly.
Probably tomorrow, it's it's, um, I just want to review it one last time, everything's in there. And um, the crosswalk is the last piece that has to go in and then we can operate.
Great, so we'll be getting that by Friday.
Yes.
But again, more grants in you. Or printed people need it.
Yes, if someone wants a printed copy, we will do that.
And so just uh last slide, just looking ahead, we'll have the elementary student services, tech and admin on the thirty, the secondary capital on thirteen. Um, directly all deliberate on the twenty-seven, I believe we're gonna have a meeting with. Town finance sub at some point in there, I can't even remember.
Yeah, and we have two of the sub coming back.
Right, great.
Talents, we never see her. And then John.
Public hearing. Public hearing in the twenty-third time meeting on board. And then just really again, um, just like to thank everyone. And just remind everyone that we respectfully submit this budget um to you all, the committee, to the citizens more generally. And the town leaders for review. Um, and we really look forward to your feedback and um. And any um encouragement and suggestions you may have. So I can go back and look at slide and grab five if you want, we can let it sit and let you study. It's uh really your call for the point, Chair.
Any additional comments that didn't come up during the presentation, obviously we'll have much more detail. From the various departments.
There was, there was one slide we talked about for reserve funds and there seemed to be a difference there. We talked about that a little bit.
Yes, um, so the reserve funds will go up and down based upon anticipated needs. For placements, um. You know, some obligations that aren't settled at this point, that will, that will determine the ebb and flow of the reserve amount.
And it was down.
We successfully downed it.
Yeah, that's because we, I mean, some of us, because we settled the unit contract a year ago, it would have been. A bigger amount in there last year because of. Or this, yeah.
Melissa, are there such things that came across our budget that, uh, from another town, that listed. Um, I think it was called Desi function. Can you explain to me what that is and if there's value in in reviewing the budget in that context?
So the Desi function are, remember the big pie chart with you? That's what Desi breaks out the expenditures as, so for instance, as superintendent. Jake's salary would fall under eleven-ten, that's the superintendent's office function code. Um, business is fourteen-ten and all accounting structures have to follow. The function codes set and the turn of accounts set by Desi. So we do have any function of those, we do report that way. Um, and you'll see it in the, um, when you look at the the budget, the account, I do include the account numbers, the first four digits are the function codes. And that determines where you report the expense.
And then is it a, is it a very granular breakdown all the way through? Everything is, all the expenditures are in sports?
Yes, so for instance, um, the account structure is a language all of its own. So you have the function code, then you have the expense type. And then you would have, um. The location code, so if I look at a number in our accounting structure, I know. Where, what the function is, what type of expensive is and what building it's at. Whether it be district-wide, special ed, Morris Elementary, Morris or Element and Jess. So, um, yes, we do break it out by. For instance, six hundred levels are PD and travel, five hundred are supplies. So it's a, it's a language all to it, all to its own.
Okay. And. I I I can't tell, is there value in in looking at a budget, does it go and compare year to year? Um, so you can see exactly what has changed or.
Yes, so when you, when you see the 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 budget booklet and the breakout, for instance, central administration, it will have. Superintendent's, um. Administration and it'll have the varying account numbers and you'll see the difference year to year. It is broken out and then the the larger crosswalk. That's by account number, which is function type. Uh, building. Um, you'll, you'll see it and you'll see that we budgeted this, we expended, you know, to date this. New budget request this, percentage, dollar difference, percentage stance. We have it in there, I can, I can go over it, when you have it to to look at.
Curious, but I, I, I'll talk to you later, I may just want to take a look at it in a simple way. Um, I just, I want to make two comments, one is to thank Jake and Melissa for. I thought was a really excellent budget presentation, um. So, so substantially more in that than. Year and all room and I at least feel like. Seen the last couple of years and so. Um, for Jake could have done it on on a month's notice, on a month's notice or whatever it is, is is. Um, really impressive and I hope will form a new baseline for for how we approach the budgeting process going forward. Um, and then the second comment was just a a purely political one, which is. I, I understand that the select board met. Last week and had a sort of fifteen-minute. Set of speculations about what may or may not be in the budget that. I at least found either constructive or particularly connected to what what is in the budget. Um, and I think we ran into similar problems last year with what was frankly just a bad relationship in this communication. Not all that much of an actual substantive difference. And I would like us to find a way to not repeat that this year, um, and. We can only control what we do from our side, but I think what that means is, um. Trying to make a point of speaking directly with the select board, talking to them about this, answering questions they have. Um, and and trying to. Build a a solid consensus as opposed to what has it times in the past, felt more like just sort of sniping back and forth, so. Um, I don't know if this was appropriate to that chairman to chairman. Finance subcommittee to whatever, I'm I'm open, you know, Jake, whatever it is, I just, based on. What I just happened to see the recording of of how that conversation had gone and would love to see us. Change direction sooner rather than later.
Can I also make a comment? Uh, can you guys hear me okay? I can't, can, can you, you can hear me? Okay, that's maybe my, I'm a little unstable, um. I I would reiterate also, thanks for all this wonderful work and. Particularly, I do really appreciate the depth of of talking about what's happening in Lennox and what's going really well. Um, I think also there's an identifiers of growth around supporting students, SEL, ensuring that students have the. Support for academics, et cetera, that they need, and I I think at some point as we. Talk to our buildings, you know, being able to dial in a little bit more about the ways in which we are directly supporting kids who have struggled. To identify their their place in Lennox that has come up through various conversations and reports, so. I'm looking forward to that, I I already see myself some of those things, but perhaps we can articulate to the community. More of the ways that we do really, um. Our efforts are to affect all students, I I personally can see. You know, where that is in a lot of the student support services, but perhaps as we articulate this. Forward, we can dial in a little bit more too about exactly. What do these different increases in positions or shifts or et cetera, what does that actually do to support all students? And, you know, we don't, we do identify things in a per pupil, but some students. Needs actually require that we provide more support and that was some of the conversation about the increases. I think at the kindergarten level that you've already articulated Jake, so I appreciate that and I appreciate as we move forward. Um, as we dial into the ways in which we. You know, have a commitment to all students and, you know, I see that reflected here and I want us to try to maybe. Further, like further fill that out, I mean, you've already done that Jake with the photos and talking about the kids, but. You know, the ways in which this is just really vital to ensuring all students' needs are met, so. That's just my thoughts and thank you for all that you've done here.
I also, you know, uh, echoing uh Laura's remarks, this was a very impressive presentation. You know, it's. It's a soul of a whole activity that we used to do back in the nineties, early two thousands. Field review was, uh, aimed at some of this technology, but rarely. Useful, very impressive and and the data uh presented was. You know, excellent, so thank you. Welcome, and thank you. Okay. Superintendent search, oh, did either bias second bias me, did either of you have anything you want to say?
No, I was listening to that, thank you so much.
Okay. Um, two can search. Superintendent search, pass this over, we are very pleased to Dr. William Collins has accepted. And now this is one of the forms from the meeting that people might have been watching the other night, so. I, once again, I wanna thank Orin, Veronica, Megan, for all the work they did to get us to the point of interviewing last week, and they brought forward three terrific candidates, and we selected Dr. William Collins, and he has accepted. And we are grateful. Anything else you wanna add?
No, I think it was, we have to resolve the contract, but that's proceeding smoothly, and I I wanted to leave that what, what not long ago was, was four searches we had to try to talk about, I think we're down to one, right?
Yeah, down to one.
I think we, we should all feel good about the progress we made.
Exactly. Okay. Back to school choice.
Yeah, so I, like we had discussed, I met with Bob and Veronica in planning for this meeting, and naturally wanted to tackle this, this meeting, but we decided to maintain the tackle of this meeting, expression of mind. You've already seen pieces of it, because I had, I layered it to the presentation, but you asked me for some very specific thing related to school choice, which I just researched on, and of course, they always write memos that are too long, but apologize for that, but I just answered a series of questions, one was where, where students arrived from, and where we send them, and you've got that data. I asked a question about where the resident students go. Third question was, what are the policies and regulations for government choice? So identified both your policies and then extracted some information both from Master General Law seven six, seventy-six, twelve B, and then DESI advisories, I think some of the Master General Law around school choice was was vague enough where they needed to put out some advisories to give districts a little bit more clarity on what the expectations were. And so I did not cherry pick from the entire FAQ that they have. I believe I provided you that link, if you wanna look at all, but I did pick out some questions that are, I think, relevant to the conversation we're having today. And then all that summed up into point four, which is what I am proposing is a set of recommendations, which maybe we just started there. And so you've already done one, so woo-hoo, we're down one, and that is devoted to participate in choice. The second is that you, is probably the most important one to talk about, and that is that you set target grade level enrollment levels as we are proposing on the grid that Amy provided on the next page. And the reason that my interpretation is that you need to do this is that if you don't do this, my understanding is you accept all. And you don't have the space to accept all. So you need to set targets, which then allow you to react to your lottery. Does that make sense to everyone? But without, a district can say, hey, we're gonna get that choice and have no profit. Lottery, but that, any choice that officially get, they have to accept. So that's my take on it. So we can certainly go to the other minute, but I'll just run through the other points. I think it's, I think what I heard at the last meeting is that you would wanna authorize me to make adjustments to school choice within reasonableness. And I guess since reasonableness is a law standard, we'll, we'll apply it here, and and I think anything that I felt was unreasonable, meaning a more significant swing, I would wanna bring back to the committee, at least to be involved in decision. Four is that we're gonna hold a lottery according to our policies and timelines. And that we'll keep that lottery that, that in effect, the, the waiting list available, if and has future seats open, and we'll just continue to move down that. That we will accept based on our own guidelines and state guidelines, which do provide preference to siblings. That I bring you a report in May on where we stand at with the choice, at that point, we will have gone through both the the middle high school and the elementary school lotteries, we'll have a pretty good sense of where we stand. We also will have a better sense of K registration. And then the only other point I put down there, because I know it's been something that's been on the committees, the policy subcommittees in general, just to revisit the idea of whether there's any in wanting to align the timelines related to school choice between the middle and highs, middle high school and elementary school, they have slightly different timelines. Is would that help in terms of just publicly projecting one message out to the general public, especially around the communities as to when they work through the application process? So I will just point it to the grid. And we made a couple of adjustments, and I'll try to rationalize it, but again, I'm really open to your thoughts on all of this. What is, we, we did hear a lot and clear on this question in the ninth grade being pretty, pretty big. And so we ended up sort of bringing it down to what was listed in the strategic plan as the optimal size. And that is seventy. And so that did reduce the number of seats available to three, based on our current enrollment projections. And it does get us to the optimal of seventy. However, we bumped up grade six. And that, that's gonna create a problem that you all have to be okay with, if you decide to go this direction, and that is it would create an over fifty percent enrollment of choice students in that grade level. Why did I do that? I think you probably know, that particular cohort is small. You have twenty-seven resident kids in that grade, in sixth grade, as compared to thirty-seven in seventh grade. So you could theoretically round out and maintain a somewhat consistent cohort in sixth grade if you added those choice students in. Again, that is an onboarding moment. For most families, it's really kindergarten, six and nine, and so that's why we put that there. I think Amy and I talked a little bit about that tenth grade, we have one tenth grade application, we had space for it, so we we opened it up, but you know, I think really what I would be kinda asking you to okay is really sort of the, the target optimal enrollments, and that we can move choice really to that level, but I'm, I'm, I'll stop there and kind of open it up to the discussion.
It seems to be what we need is the motion based on your recommendation, the motion to accept students in grades kindergarten, six, nine, and ten on a limited basis. And give you the flexibility, give the superintendent the flexibility to adjust other grade level acceptance based on incoming outgoing students. Or something along that line. I think the adjustments you've made are are reasonable. Do worry about grades getting, you know, much above the fifty percent mark, but that's that's me.
Sure. Kind of, what is the impact to grade with when we have the fluctuations in enrolled students as, as we see here? Is it solely small classes? Or does it affect, or is there an effect on classes offered, curriculum, does it Caesar, yo-yo, in, in any way?
Yeah. Yeah, my, my sense in the the elementary grade, you, you can get a pretty good sense of yeah, you don't completely have a self-contained model, but you have a primary teacher that's managing a group of students, you have a gym center with three teachers, how will your class size is gonna be for the most part? When you get to sixty, you have twenty kids in the class, which I think in the younger grades is kind of pushing it, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily you wanna be in the district in fifth grade, is that okay? Probably. The question you're asking though is, would it, would additional services might be required, it's hard to tell because it depends on student and what they sort of bring into the district, right?
Yeah, but I'm also asking at the other
Okay.
What happens when we lose a number of kids? When all of a sudden we have a drop in the number of students entering a class? And then the following year goes back. I mean, it's conjecture at this point, I don't know if we've experienced it, but I'm just trying to think.
I, I think your, your middle high school, particularly your high school, my sense is your, your discussions over many years have been, how do we maintain a robust high school proper study, and of course, the better enroll, and I think you do that through your enrollment management strategies that you're, that you're applying right now, that's probably where you're gonna have your biggest impact. So, you know, the question is, when you onboard kids in sixth and they attracted to the high school, that cohort continues forward, and I think it does help to strengthen the nineteen-twelve program. But there's a trade-off here in that you're, you are potentially moving over, you know, your threshold you've set. I mean, as, as you know, in your strategic plan, you've also discussed other options, which would be, would be shrinking. And, but as you shrink, you know, as you see at a school like Mount Everett, which is shrinking, it, things, the ability to offer things get really difficult.
Yeah.
When your, when your class size, if you, when your grade class sizes are that small. So, because everything becomes a single tenant, I guess, it's impossible to schedule.
One other question I just had, this might be the same numbers we saw last time, but looking at the twenty-one applications for kindergarten, it, it occurs to me that that's actually quite low relative to what we typically put into choice, even in the elementary school, do you have any sense of have our incoming applications been dropping?
The, the application deadline for Morris is April fifteenth. Half the applications will come in between now and then.
Okay.
Because people, people generally apply within the last thirty days.
Okay, so we don't have to worry, there are no longer twenty-five, if you want to choice it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Just for example, I have many high school applications to make, I was getting here about you.
And I guess what I'll promise, if you are to trust me with this process, is to absolutely work with Brendan Jeremiah as we go forward. This will not be a decision made from my office up here, it's gonna be a conversation with Brendan Jeremiah about what makes sense if we look ahead.
Just making a wish.
Well, we'll attempt one, we've got everything in it. I knew that we authorized the superintendent to open choice for the coming school year in the kindergarten and grades six, nine, and ten at the levels he thinks appropriate, with an expectation that he will return to consult us if projections differ significantly from what we are looking at here.
In terms of consult if projections differ?
Yes.
One second.
What is it just? Very nice, all in favor? This is gonna be a roll call vote, Veronica?
Veronica Fenton, I.
David?
David Rubler, I.
Megan Purdy, I. Christine Marley, I.
Tom Mudge, I.
Martin Gass, I. Thank you.
Good day, I'm already subcommittee reports.
I can just do ours quickly for teaching, learning, and culture, as we've all talked about, you know, with changes in leadership positions and various aspects that we've been working on. We had sort of a meeting to kind of summarize all the things that we felt like were kind of hanging out there. And then our focus will be to sort of reprioritize and decide what actually should live with the teaching, learning, and culture subcommittee, I think our subcommittee has something in a lot of what's been going on in, in trying to fill leadership positions, you know, support teachers, support students, et cetera, so Jake has very kindly also talked about helping us to sort of just realign to get, just to get into what are the things that we should actually be doing, we've raised a lot of questions, there's been a lot of work around, you know, student culture, et cetera, and I think we've, we have a lot of information, and there has been work being done, so that will be our focus, you know, going forward, but it was a really good meeting to talk about you know, things that have been resolved and things that are still out there, and and how do we, you know, like, like all that Jake has been talking about, how do we align the work to best support our students and staff?
Thank you. And we had a finance subcommittee meeting last Friday in anticipation of this meeting, and Melissa and Jake kind of ran us through some of what, you know, we've got to see tonight, not the whole, not the whole presentation, obviously, but some of what we saw, some robust discussions around the budget and some potential things that we could get, as this develops over the next few months. Okay. A motion needed to go into executive session.
I knew we going into executive session for the purpose of MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section thirty-one B, twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel without being contacted.
One second.
Pause for a role, come on, now how are we going to get Veronica in to that discussion? Do you have a separate?
If you empty the room, can't we just stay the way we are?
Oh, people can log in.
What's that?
People who are already logged into this meeting are still be, can still be here, people can log in.
Okay.
This code.
You can create a breakout, Ron.
I've never done that.
Okay, I could try.
You could try, or I saw it again, I'm a, yes, I'm creating.
We're not in the executive session, but we have to take, take a roll call vote, but I tried to chant it down. Yeah, you do, stick around for the roll call, all in favor?
Megan Purdy, I. Christine Marley, I.
Tom Mudge, I.
Martin Gass, I.
Bob, Bob, I.
David Rubler, I.
Veronica Fenton, I.
Thank you.